Open the meetings for the Leominster Planning Board June 18, 2018, 6:35. Modification of a site plan approval for 45 Summer Street.
Good evening. My name is Nick Fong. I'm with Goldsboro Preston Ringwell, per engineer firm in there. We were recently retained by the applicant to request modifications to the site plan. Magno will talk about the two special permits for this project as well.
Okay.
So...
Let's open the other hearing.
I can open the other hearing now.
Thirty-five, sixty-five.
Okay. I'll open the 635. Modification of a special permit approved for 45 Summer Street for use. And I gotta wait for five minutes on the other one.
Fair enough.
But you can...
I'll talk about the majority and we'll answer any questions as they come in. So again, my name is Nick Fong. We're requesting some modifications to some things that you granted in the fall of 2016. The subject site is 45 Summer Street, which, as you're looking at the fancy plan next year, you have a park here, Summer Street's 90-degree turn from the old mill building. In the fall of 2016, September, the application was made for three special permits in the site plan, special permits to convert a mill into apartments, off-site parking, and reduction in parking required as well as the site plan. Between September 2016, when the meeting was closed and the permits were issued, the special permit for request of reduction in parking was withdrawn. And what you guys issued was two special permits, the mill conversion, off-site parking, and site plan approval. That site plan approval and special permits involved the 36 proposed apartments within the mill building. That had 27 parking spaces in the general... On the backside of the existing mill. And then what it also did was the off-site parking included the demolition of the 42 and 44 apartment housing structure to create parking for 18 parking spaces. So that was the off-site parking. Since the fall of 2016, the applicant has purchased a third property, the vacant house at 20 Summer. There's an inset on the plans that show you the detail up here. You can see 45 is the main, 44 is this pork chop-looking thing, and you can see the proximity of 20 down the street. The whole purpose of this was the same applicant of 45 is involved in the ownership of 42 and 44, so the knocking down of that building is losing revenue in the apartments that existed. So the whole goal that we're proposing with these requested amendments is to provide the required parking that's needed from the bylaw through off-site while maintaining the existing six units. So what our proposal specifically talks about? Yes, sir?
And let me open the next hearing. I open the hearing for modification, the special permit approval for 45 Summer Street for parking.
Thank you.
Continue.
So what we're specifically looking to do is save the existing apartments located at 44 Summer while still needing the parking requirements for not only the 36, but as well as the six. So we have one and a half parking spaces. We have 36 and six 42 units. We need 63 parking spaces. We're proposing that by having 14 parking spaces at the 44 Summer Street location. The 20 Summer Street location is currently a vacant house. That will be completely torn down and a parking lot of 18 parking spaces will be provided. And then we've slightly reconfigured the approved parking at 45 to find another four parking spaces. So we're providing the fully compliant 63 spaces for all. I can certainly get into any more details regarding the application than anybody else has. If you'd like, we've gone through, received all department head comments. There was only one comment. It was from the fire department. He requested two things. One, this island here, we propose basically an access drive coming down, then have to turn into the parking area. He asked that we shave that radius back as much as possible. I provided a sketch electronically. I have paper copies if the board doesn't have them already.
No idea.
Yeah.
Just like a sketch of the island.
Is this eight and a half by 11? That we provided. The fire department has looked at it and said that they were fine with that. It would be an email. The second request that they've had is that an area in Summer Street, in this general area, in front of the 41 Summer Street area be designated as no parking. The applicant has already agreed to paint anything in that area, the designated area, provided that the powers that be within the town say that it's enforceable and they actually want it to happen. He's willing to paint it. So I can certainly expand on anything else before this question's over.
There was one question the police department had about people stopping and parking to unload groceries and stuff. Let me see. It says here, "I do not think you will have enough parking on site," from the municipal department. "I expect traffic problem in front of 44 and 45 as people stop in front of the building to drop our passengers, groceries, and before moving down the street to park at 20."
So there's three main entrances. There's three entrances into the 45 building. The main is actually within this corner on the backside. There is an existing door on the Summer Street. That, as far as I'm aware, is emergency exit only.
Okay.
So as far as dropping people off, they would still have to walk around the...
That wouldn't happen. They'll drive in the back. So your main entrance is in the rear?
In the rear. If you're familiar with the site, in the corner of the existing building, there's a bank of electric meters. All those are coming out. That's the main entrance.
Okay.
Are you anticipating having specific parking? Or say, is one person per unit going to have a parking spot assigned to them in the back of the building and then everybody else basically can fill in the remainder? Or is it first come, first served?
Right now, I'm not aware of either operation. I know that a lot of the units are one-bedroom. I think there's a scattering of two bedrooms. There's six units within the existing that apparently has no formal parking. They're getting 14 kind of from that area. I think that we're meeting the requirement, but whether or not it's going to be families that have the two cars, I don't think it's that type of development.
But I mean, I guess what he's saying is maybe there's got to be some way to manage that parking so that each unit gets a designated parking spot, and then the rest come up for grabs.
That's certainly a capability. We haven't had that specific conversation. Just from the standpoint of 31 spaces being available adjacent to the property that has 36 apartments, who's the five that kind of automatically go across the street? That's the part that I think the problem is.
Maybe the two-bedroom ones.
Maybe.
Whatever he comes up with. But plus, the other thing is, what's the plan if people are parking illegally or somebody has guests? I mean, we had a lot of discussion around how many parking spots. And I always was against this plan unless it had the right required amount. So it's good to see that you're meeting the required amount. The issue is, how are they going to police that to make sure that people just don't park in a unit's parking space or they belong there? You know, that's going to be something they're going to have to watch.
There is existing emergency vehicles and no parking along the front of the building already. There's been a request that the applicant is fine with as far as designation of an additional one. Truthfully, if you're familiar with the site, I've not really seen a lot of people stopping without horns and things like that flaring. It's a concern everywhere, even when they have enough space. It's a pretty tight location.
No, wait a minute, ma'am. I'll get to that plan.
So the 20 Summer Street parking, is that going to be like overflow parking? Is that going to be designated?
It's partly required.
I know it's partly required. I'm getting there. But it's like, who's going to get those spots?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think what we're going to request and some of our conditions is a management plan for parking. So in that way, you'll assign the parking places, the first, at least one, to each exposed proximity.
That's what matters.
Okay. And then the guest parking will be over at 20.
I think it would be reasonable. Someone would look at the parking.
Right, right. So we'll probably put that in the condition, just come up with a parking management plan and to have assigned parking places. Do you have anything else you wish to add?
I'm sorry?
Do you have anything else you wish to add?
I can expand on any specific questions.
Ma'am, you had a question?
Yeah. My name's Laurie Herblzheimer. My family owns the house at 21 Summer. Right across from the vacant house.
Please identify yourself.
Laurie Herblzheimer.
Okay.
My family owns 21 Summer, which is just across from the vacant house. And I only found out about this plan like two days ago. And I'm just wondering if there's going to be any kind of attention to landscaping or something to make the parking lot not feel like, you know, it's a residential street, but our house now is going to look straight into a parking lot. So are you planning on any kind of like plantings, trees, something to give it more of a residential feel? Or is it going to be like, our house now is going to look into a parking lot?
You have any to answer?
So there is part of a landscaping plan that's...
Like along the sidewalk or along the sidewalk?
Ma'am, this is...
Ma'am, that one-to-one, you're three through the board.
Okay. I'm sorry. I've never done this before.
Okay, that's all right. And he's got a question, and we'll get an answer to it.
Okay.
So it is time to make a parking lot look like a house. There is going to be a pole light lighting the area as well as landscaping. There's a total of six trees and basically low landscaping around the edge of the pavement.
So where is Summer Street on there?
Summer Street is right here.
So you're going to have like two trees?
There's two trees here. There's two trees here, and there's two trees in the rear.
That's it? Okay. So basically, our house is going to look into a parking lot?
Correct.
Well, I'm reading your narrative from May 16th, if I could, Joan. As it says, "A total of 21 trees are required to comply with the ordinance requirement of one tree per three parking spaces. A total of 12 trees are provided attendant to 45 Summer, six adjacent to the Summer Street layout on the north side of the building, with the remaining six within the landscape area between the southern face of the building and the realigned parking spaces. A total of five trees have been provided attendant to the multifamily structure at 44, three along the northern edge of the parking space, and the remaining two within the front yard along Summer Street. Lastly, six trees have been provided along the limits of the parking area at 20, bringing the total number of trees provided to 23."
Correct. I can point those out.
Yeah.
So these are the six along the Summer Street right away. There are five scattered within the landscape area along 45, on 44, the three along the northern, two in the front yard, and then, as I pointed out, the six on 20.
I just want to make it clear, it wasn't only six. They were just...
There was only six on that specific...
There's always a concern about Summer Street.
And the floodlight, how bright is that going to be and how long is it going to be on at night?
So it's a pole light, like a street light, area light, a 10-foot high pole. We've actually provided the photometric area where the limit, if you live here, the limit shouldn't spill past the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street if you live here.
So that parking lot will be lit?
And it's facing down, the light itself.
These are the special lights that they focus the light downwards rather than out. Okay? Okay? Is there any... You have grass all around that or...
Yes, grass, low landscaping.
Any additional bushes or anything?
No, not proposed. They might have a green thumb when they're actually planting it.
Okay.
Bushes and mulch might be a little bit easier to maintain coming back and mowing it constantly.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have any other questions or comments from the audience? Do I have any other questions or comments from the audience?
See, I think it would make it easier for you if they put bushes around that, wouldn't it?
I was thinking those tall...
Abrevities.
Well, see, the abrevities get... You also don't want to make it so it's too enclosed, okay? It's better sometimes to have it open so people can see it. And that's what, you know, we used to have the abrevities over here at the monument. And we had all kinds of drug problems and things so they could hide behind the bushes. This way, we found that we'd rather have low bushes and be able to see through it. So it doesn't, it may not, you know, hide things as much, but it's safety all around. It's worked out better.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm a little shocked because it's, you know, it was been zoned residential that street. And now a parking lot to me isn't residential. A house is residential. So I'm first surprised that that house is being torn down to make a parking lot and not another residence. And I'm also really sad that now my house is going to look like a parking lot.
Well, actually, you're taking out, it was industrial before, okay?
Before the little yellow house was built?
Yeah, that whole area. And that was, and it's since been changed over the years. And that's why you had that big industrial building, okay?
Well, I know a few years ago, my dad tried to get zoning for a fourth apartment in that building, and he couldn't get it because they said it's zoned residential.
But that's been changed. And then what we've been doing is the history of the city is what we've done is that rather than just having a big vacant building over there, we've come up with an ordinance plan that allows people to come in and rehab these old factory buildings, bring them back, and make it residential. But at the same time, we have to protect the people that buy those apartments or rent them because they have to have a place to park. So with that, we have a formula where you have to have one and a half places per unit. So that because of that, they had to go, because of the density, they had to go off down the street and buy, they bought that house and got them the other 20 spaces that they need to comply with the regulations. So it's still going to be 90 percent, you know, it's going to be all residential now. And it's just that people, there'll be some people parking their cars over that area. And we try to control it the best we can. Okay? We're trying, yeah. Okay. Do I have any other comments or questions? Yes?
Are these all market rate units?
Please identify yourself, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Please identify.
Yep. Sue Schelte, who's from the City Council here in Leominster. Are they all market rate rentals?
I believe so, yes. Yeah, it's not a 40B.
Are they all market rate?
Yeah. This is not a 40B unit.
Is there one to clarify?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Probably above market rate.
Above market rate, yeah?
Yeah. It's on the high end.
Okay, I think a motion is an order.
Motion to close the hearing. Oh, wait. Well, we're going to close...
You got to close all three.
We'll close all three because they're all open. So do we need to close them separately or can we close them in part?
You got to close them separately.
All right. Motion to close the 630 hearing for 45 Summer Street.
Got you. Okay. Motion to close modification of a site plan for 45 Summer Street. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Both say no, motion carries.
Motion to close the 635 special permit for 45 Summer Street. Second.
Okay. You have a motion made and seconded to close a modification of a special permit approved for 45 Summer Street.
Motion to close the 640 hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Oops, sorry.
All in favor, say aye. Both say no, motion carries.
Motion for the 640, to close the 640 special permit, public hearing for 45 Summer Street. Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the 6, the special permit. All in favor, say aye. Both say no, motion carries. Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
And just to let you know, we'll discuss this later on in the agenda and turn in recommendations. We'll do it at that time.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. 645, continue public hearing for City Council petition 40-18. Kristen Gallant, Planning Director. Amendment article 18, section 22, 105, the Leominster zoning ordinance will include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. Now, everybody get that. Package. Let me get this out of the way. We've had several meetings with the City Council and meetings with the committee itself. And out of that, kind of, we came up with a map. And I'll hold this one up. I hope you can zoom in on that.
Yeah, I have a bigger one. I'll just hang it on.
You got a big one?
Yeah.
Once you get the big one. Let's put that up, Kristen, so you can get it on the...
Do you want it hanging up there or...
Yeah, up there. Okay. Basically, what this shows is on the brown section of the thing is where it's not allowed. It's all your residences and things like that, okay? Schools, churches, and wherever we knew where there was a school or a church. And this is not final by any means because anybody coming in with a permit would have to come in and get, do a due diligence and do their own, you know, what's in their neighborhood and check everything out. But as we can see now, you get a blue and a red circle or a line around. The blue is a distance of 1,000 feet. So if we want to put it into the regulation that you can't put marijuana facility within 1,000 feet or anything, that would be the blue line. If you go with the red line, that's 500 feet, okay? You can see, in most cases, it makes little or no difference. And the state recommends the 500 feet. In fact, I was reading in the paper today that Pittsburgh is at 300 feet. Okay? So there's much looser. What you end up with is only a few places in the yellow where you can actually have a marijuana facility. One up by the airport, there's a little sliver up on the corner on Airport Road, which they probably could squeeze in something. It's right on the Pittsburgh line. This one over here, okay, in this area, that's on the backside of Orchard Hill or Pioneer Park. As you go over the bridge, there's about... I'm going from memory now. There's around 45 or 50 acres in there that you could do something. And that's right on the Lunenburg line on that side. The other big, this area right in the middle here, this here is all Lock Drive. That's where they are. It's Mohawk Drive. That's that area off of Nashua. And that's where we've already given a permit for medical marijuana off of that area. And that's off of Mohawk Drive.
Two, right?
Huh?
Two.
Two, right. The other area is, this area right here is Cansio Drive.
Yeah.
Okay, Cansio. And that's close in some places, you know, where you wouldn't be able to do it. You could do it. It's a little iffy because it almost touches the 500 there in some spots. And if you have to travel through a spot, it may preclude it. But that, you can do Cansio Drive. And then the last one is down here, off of J-Tech, the Business Park down on the Sterling Line.
Or Research Drive.
So those are the areas that strictly, it's all industrial properties. There are no commercial properties, no residential properties, nothing. It's strictly held to be done in the industrial areas of the city.
This is for...
Commercial.
Commercial retail. This is for retail, recreational?
For the whole recreational. What they have done, the state has done, is they, the original was for medical marijuana.
Yep.
Then they combined, basically for all practical purposes. They didn't, but they did. They overlapped so much that they combined the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana. And where they allowed them to be, if you're selling recreational, you can sell medical too. So... And then the other parts that come in for, we don't make any exceptions for manufacturing. Okay? But it's only manufactured or we don't allow pollers or someplace to have a buy room or, you know, a place where you can actually smoke marijuana. That's not allowed. So we've tightened it up quite a bit.
You can only have three.
And we can have three.
Leominster, you want to have three recreational?
They can have three recreational.
Based on the state?
It's based, huh?
It's two.
Oh, two?
Remember, we were trying to figure out what the number of licenses is.
Yeah, I think it's only two. That's right.
We determined it was nine. There's nine liquor licenses, you know, package store licenses. And so 20% of that, I think, we're rounding to two.
Two, okay.
And that's how many retailers you need to allow, okay?
You have to, but you can allow more.
Other facilities, you can allow more.
You can allow more.
Well, in the ordinance, what this draft ordinance is saying is that Leominster will allow the minimum number that they're allowed to allow. So that would be two. But that's for retailers. Grow facilities, labs, other things like that, they can be considered differently. And that's up to the special permit.
And then that would, that'd be up to the City Council's special permit.
And how many growers will they allow?
Well, I guess that's to be...
We don't restrict it. We don't have a restriction on growers.
We already proved one.
Yeah, but that's, growers in a separate secured building, okay?
Right, right.
It's like a manufacturer. Okay, so we don't have, there's no public entry.
So we only have nine package stores in Leominster?
They still have to be in industrial.
Yeah.
That serve, that, I think so, yeah, that have all full service.
It's hard liquor, not beer and wine.
Hard liquor.
Hard liquor.
Beer and wine.
No. So why are we so restrictive with this? It's the same thing. I don't understand myself.
Well, that was the direction we got.
From who?
But that's what, no, that's what the state says.
The state didn't say that. The state says you have to guarantee a minimum, but you could have as many as you have for liquor licenses. You could do whatever you want.
You can have more than two if the city wants to issue them.
Well, this is so restrictive. It's like being part of a puritanical society with a law that you passed two years ago. I don't agree with any of them. Sorry.
That's up to you.
It is.
Okay. So with that, we have the... We put all the changes, they're all in here. The only thing that we added... There was some question when we had our joint meeting with the City Council, primarily the grow facilities. This is actually something I read, I didn't read it, but they mentioned it and then I read it on sense. Is California, because California is doing a lot of, they're having a lot of problems with their water. I guess the water consumption that they use to grow these plants inside, hydroph... I don't know how they do it, you know, is very high consumption of water. So they have...
They have to water.
Yeah.
So they have to water.
So all we're saying is if you have, if you're going to do that, is you've got to commit to the plant to show us what your consumption of water is going to be. It's restrictive. You just have to plant water. Okay?
The only suggestion I have, instead of 1,000 feet, make it 750 and go somewhere in the middle between the 500 and... Make it seven fifty, and go somewhere in the middle between the five hundred and the thousand.
We did the five hundred that the state recommends.
Yeah, or, well, some people want...
You know, why do we change everything, the state lays the cell, why do we change everything to make it, you know?
But I mean, to make everybody happy if you went in the middle.
Well, I don't know if I've had any...
First of all, it's only an industrial, it's gonna be five hundred feet.
See, like even the five hundred feet, the restriction...
I don't think it makes a difference.
It makes a difference between that, yeah, even the thousand, it made the difference.
It's still the same, sir.
I'm just saying, in the other industrial places, you want the seven fifty, then you'd be okay.
Well, I think, yeah.
Well, there aren't many properties that fall into this category, so the only thing is, it can only be a few spots.
Okay, so that's what we have, that's what the, I'll open it up to the audience. Do I have any questions?
Yes. I'm Sue Shell, who's up on the city council here in Lomond's. And what I wanted to revisit, because we did have a conversation, I want to commend Kristen Kelly for her hard work she's done on the ordinance, it's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of conversations with Coleman and Page, so everybody in the council, and I'm speaking for myself, really appreciate the work you put in. Because it's been tough to deal with, it's not easy, we're trying to be very sensitive, we're trying to be very conservative, I think, in our approach to make sure that we're doing it legally, and that we're being responsive and thoughtful about constituents and where some of these things are gonna end up. So I just want to add, I want to just raise one thing. Currently, this ordinance, so we had dealt with medicinal marijuana in cultivation facilities. That's all cited in industrial zones, I think that makes perfect sense. And now we were trying to deal with adult-use recreational marijuana. So adult-use recreational is really a completely separate permitting process. That has to get done through the cannabis control commission. If you are medicinal, even if you have a medicinal license from the Department of Public Health, you still have to go through a separate process if you want to expand and get a license for recreational or adult use. I, not that long ago, got a lengthy letter from a person who has a manufacturing company in Lomond's, and was very concerned about retail traffic, because adult-use recreational is really commercial, it's a retail operation. It's not, it's just people will go in and buy whatever product it is, it could be edibles, it could be candy, it could be a variety of things. And this person was arguing that with big, big tractor-trailer trucks, with the kind of industrial use that he has, and has been there for a long time, he was concerned about a lot of retail traffic and what that might mean to his own liability. And I took a ride by this particular place, and he's located in an old industrial park. Streets are kind of narrow, they're really not any sidewalks, and I could see that, you know, big tractor-trailer trucks could be a problem, you know, if you've got a lot of retail traffic. So I, you know, I've just been kind of thinking out loud, or just trying to figure out, adult entertainment is something that we dealt with a while ago, and that was kind of a sensitive thing. We, with the city council, in consultation with the planning board, ultimately decided that that would be zoned in commercial by special permit of the city council. So it can't go anywhere else, anybody who wants to come in and open an adult entertainment, and there's a bunch of different definitions of that. So for adult-use recreational marijuana, I was thinking that if we, there are some industrial locations that I think would be perfect. Some of the newer industrial locations, they have really wide streets, really nice sidewalks. They're more open and conducive, I would think, to both industrial and commercial traffic. So I think that there are some really good industrial locations in Lomond's. I'm worried that it might be really, we might be, we might just run into difficulty with that. So I was thinking, and we'll have this conversation at the city council meeting, of opening it up to commercial and industrial. I'm not a proponent, I don't want to say anything downtown, I mean, Pittsburgh just went through, John, you mentioned Pittsburgh. They excluded their whole downtown. There's nothing from this college all the way up to the upper common, I think that makes sense. So in a little strip mall somewhere tucked away or, excuse me, some other commercial place, it might make sense to locate an adult-use recreational marijuana store.
Yeah, that, I brought up that same question at one of the city council meetings some time ago, and here also. And the same thing I was concerned about, there were somewhere restricted, some of the parking places, but even the one that we have on Lock Drive, okay, that's not a good location for commercial. And in fact, we brought up, and I, at one time, two-way council, we discussed that, early on when we were looking at that, was, you know, putting a commercial establishment in the industrial area went against our zoning, okay? And the impression that I got, and we didn't have any votes, from the majority of the city council, was that they wanted to make it as restrictive as they can, and they really weren't interested in going to open it up to commercial. So with that input that I had gotten back when, because I agree with it, at some point, some places are not good, with that input, we said, well, let's try to open it up to a few places. I can say I got a poor reception to it. So at that point, we just moved forward with making it fairly restrictive and doing it with the industrial part. Now, it doesn't say that, you know, it can't be changed, everything gets changed, it's on the paper, and we look at it, and somebody comes up with a plan, you come in, the city council says, gee, you know, really, I don't want to pick on a place, but I'll say Tony Offy Plaza. Please, I don't mean that, but just picking some off the top of my head, and we're gonna allow it there. Well, maybe the other people don't want it there, I don't know, that's another, that's another whole bag of wax that we would open up and have to look, and have people take a look at it, and stuff like that. So we had questioned it a while back, again, when we're doing the medical marijuana. And that's the input that I got. So that's when we wrote the ordinance, we went along through what I had for, or I perceived as, as the direction that I had. If anybody wants to change it, like I said, we, all this is a recommendation from this board. If the city council wants to go forward and say, gee, no, we want to change the zoning so that we, you know, you can allow it to be commercial, and...
Or exclude it from some industrial.
Or, you know...
It's really on a location by, I keep thinking it's a location reservation.
Well, it's on my special permit anyway.
Because if you look at where the registry is, that's like a retailer use when you really think about it. It's high traffic, high yields. And that's more conducive to having it in an area like that, but if you stick this on Tansio Drive or around the corner of Tucker Drive, that's kind of a different story.
Yeah. That's why...
This is all by special permit anyway, right?
There are a lot of industrial buildings down on Jimmy Whitney's, where the registry is, that will create a lot of travel truck traffic.
Yeah, oh, it will, absolutely, but you're still gonna have that other traffic there, and those...
That's what we... That's what we've always had to admit, we've always separated the industrial from the... Okay? And this medical marijuana, this, on the marijuana thing, is a change, it's the only thing that we would allow, you know, commercial, you know, in that area, there would be a commercial, an industrial area. So it goes, it does go against good planning, but that's what the...
City council?
That's what we get, that was the direction that I got, okay?
Right, no, no, I understand that, John.
Okay, so what we're doing is, well, you know, we'll do, we've got now, we've still got a vote on it, and then that'll go to you guys, and then if you say, gee, no, we really, if the city council had their meeting, and you have your hearings, and they decide that you want to do a commercial, then we'll add a commercial component to it. It doesn't change that much, because all the basic wording stays the same, okay? Your distances, your format, your formality, you're getting a special permit. You have to have an agreement with the city, your host agreement, you have to have a host agreement. None of that changes. So the bulk of the ordinance pretty much stays the same, is, it's just, we'd have to find that, you know, take a look, tweak it here or there. So can it be done? Yes, it can.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, at this point, it's up to the board, if they want to change it, yeah, they could, but the direction I had up to this point was to go the other way.
And I understand that, and I heard all of those conversations, and I've just, I've been listening and trying to think about it, and have come to the conclusion that I think it would make more sense if we had more space to be able to vote on a special permit for a specific location. Some are gonna be great and industrial, a lot are gonna be not so great. There might be some good locations in commercial, and they're gonna be plenty. And the whole people objecting and the butters objecting, and that's all part of the process, and I agree. Some people will be adamantly opposed to...
With a special permit, what makes it, special permit, we can, we have a lot of control on the special permit. Or you do, okay? Is that you can require roadwork, you can require a lot more buffers, you can, you know, I mean, just, you know, we have some projects to come before, it's a site plan, we have subdivision regulations, we have the, we, you know, I used to always say, the planning board is the board, okay, of permitted uses, okay? The ZBA is non-permitted uses. So everything that comes through here with the proper documentation is ultimately permitted. And what we gotta do is control it properly. So that's what we're trying to do, okay? But, yeah, I appreciate your input. Okay. Do I have any other comments, questions? Okay. Motion would be in, I'll ask that one more time, do I have any other comments or questions? Final, the last time. Any other questions, comments? Motion would be on to close the hearing.
So moved second.
Motion made in second to close the hearing. Any further discussion? Here and none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Call to order.
Patrick Pearl.
Here.
Fred Frederick.
Yeah.
Paul Weiser. Salvador Giacconi.
Here.
Ansuza.
Yes.
Carvajal.
Here.
Tom Skerritt.
Okay, minutes of previous meetings, June eighth, or June fourth, right?
Did you...
Yeah, everybody got one, they should have been here.
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, I have a motion to accept. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections?
No.
Here and none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Plans submitted, Willard Street, preliminary subdivision approval.
The next meeting is July sixteenth.
Okay.
She's at five open right now.
Six thirty?
Yeah, six, six thirty.
Is that a favorite plan?
She's your favorite plan. He's made some changes. Not many. Okay. Okay, I have a motion to schedule this for July fifteenth, six thirty.
Sorry, July sixteen.
What's that?
July sixteen.
Oh, sixteen?
Yeah.
Sure.
At six thirty.
Sixteenth, six thirty. Any discussion?
Nope.
Here and none, call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Carries. Here and off of Thirty-two Hotel Street.
Hopefully, the final chapter will start us.
Good evening, my name is Steve Bell from Women of Damm. This property was in before, last October, there were two buildings on one lot. Created a line to separate the two buildings, so they each had their own lot. Now... Twenty-eight and the Hotel Street Realty Trust were the two lots that were created on a lot of... Now, twenty-eight encroached onto Thirty-two.
That's right.
But they have an easement for the owners of twenty-eight to maintain and take care of that building. The owner of twenty-eight wanted to, or wants to, give a sliver of land so that the building is entirely on one piece of land. So they went to the ZBA and acquired a special permit, Thirty-two, so that they could cut off of a pre-existing non-conforming lot that sliver of land could be conveyed to twenty-eight.
That sliver is the twelve foot?
Yes.
Okay, so your new line is on the other side of the house?
Is your both non-conforming lots, sorry.
Right.
Yes. But twenty-eight originally had two buildings on one lot.
Okay.
By state statute, you can subdivide it.
You got that line one foot off the front porch.
What was the, why the special permit? To, for them to convey paramount pre-existing non-conforming lot, the building inspectors have the ZBA issued a special permit. In his denial, he said that the ZBA needed to issue a special permit, and they did, and they did.
That was for their setback to the...
But happy for the setback.
That was setback, yes.
It was to allow them to...
This one, yes.
The twelve foot just to contain the building, but, I mean, he's still non-conforming on those...
It was, yeah. Okay.
Was trying to make a lot of situations clear.
Okay, fine.
A little less order.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Endorse.
Endorse, I'll be there.
Motion made and seconded to endorse. Any further discussion? Here and none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Four point one, modification of site plan approval, Forty-five Summer Street. Have a motion to take these...
The lot?
So I can't.
No, you can't, two and a couple, because the other's a special permit.
Yeah, I can take one and then two and, two and three.
So the only thing they were coming in here was to say, we're gonna conform with it now. That's the difference, and they had additional parking lot?
Yeah, well, what they did, not only that, was they bought, the house across the street, then there was that other piece of property that was behind the other house that was next door.
Yeah.
They also bought that piece of property.
Yeah.
Originally, they wanted to tear down those two across the street and realize, wait a minute. We can make money from revenue they have, and we gotta go over here.
But I made for this house, we were trashed out.
So they got, so they got that, but so they got the parking lot and the special permit is because it's... The special permit is not contiguous, so that means you require a special...
Well, we already...
But we had already given, issued that, but it gives the warning.
Buying a home in downtown.
No, no, not at all.
So the special permit is just the extra parking to make it conform, that's it? That's all it is?
That's all.
That's the only modification.
So that's all the modifications as well?
Well, they hadn't bought that property yet, so they really had to come in and say, bought.
Well, they had...
Everything else has been approved.
Exactly, everything else was approved.
Except they're gonna keep those two houses, yeah.
Well, because we approved it without, you know, without taking any parking away, then they would have had to take down those other houses.
They would have had to take, they were gonna take down the back part of the front house, of the house across the street. Okay? So that way, no, they modified their plan, they leave it in, they got that out of the house.
This was making it cause prohibitive.
Now they have parking for both Forty-five Summer Street and Forty-four Summer Street, it didn't have adequate parking in itself, so...
So that's the primary, this is...
Rinse one up.
I think, I think, and I think in the long run, it'll make the neighborhood nicer.
I did too.
Okay?
I just wanted to get going.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I need three motions.
Well, I know, for first one, four point one, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Tom, motion for, modification of site plan, approved for Forty-five, have a motion to accept. Any conditions?
You have any conditions?
Okay.
Do I follow the landscape plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, wait a minute, we want to see that be in this parking.
Did we ask about snow storage on there?
We did, it's on there, it's on there.
It's on there, yeah. It's on there, yeah.
Right, good.
We want...
The asset is in...
I think we wanted a parking management plan.
Because otherwise it's going to be a field.
We can do that, no, we'll do that for forty-five, we'll do that for...
Oh, for four point three?
Yeah, the special permit.
Wouldn't you think of the, they're going to have a parking like that?
Say we put it on all of them.
I do too.
That's general.
Okay.
Yeah.
But wouldn't you think they would try to designate, like, somebody has two spots?
No, not if they don't have to, because it's too much work to think about it, to say, okay, this one doesn't get it over here, they get it over... See, there's some thought that goes into this and some work, so they don't want, I'm sure they want to skate through that.
Yeah, they just want to leave it open.
Yeah, so let's put it on all.
Better get home early. Yeah, they're like boss.
If you're not home by three thirty, you're parking across the street, or maybe an enterprise bank. Because if the people visiting, or whatever...
Why can't they just have a, well, they need to have a, why can't they just have a designated slot per... My, my nephew's in a condo complex and it's like A through, it's A through Z. And I was there on a Saturday and I didn't park anywhere where it was A through Z, I went and parked somewhere else. But I know, and there were spots that were open on a Saturday afternoon.
But they don't have enough spaces to have, you know, multiple people visiting at the same time.
Oh, you might find that is just overcrowded, there might be no parking spots.
But they only, they, that's all they have to do, that's my point. He was having a get together with like fifteen people and then you have to just find a place to park and you can't park, and you can't park where...
It's designated where to park.
To park.
So I got it down here as a management parking.
None of them should be there. She woke up and heard the rain.
So we got a motion.
So anyway, you should put on all this.
Okay, I got it down here as a management parking.
Let them think about what they need to do.
Exactly.
You know, let them come up with a plan for it. We put it out there or something.
Well, you'd think they'd want to, because they're going to make it more marketable, because someone's going, they're going to want a designated spot.
You would think, you would think. I would think it's always the...
Okay. Okay, that's a problem. I have a motion made and seconded with the addition of a management parking plan.
And department head on it.
Yes.
And department head on it. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion on the special permit approval for forty-five Summer Street.
Same.
For the, with the same, for the years.
Same, same, uh...
Department heads.
And parking plan.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for forty-five special permit for uses of management parking plan.
No, that's just for use.
All in favor say aye. Vote say no. Motion carries. What, forty, four point three?
Now I made a motion for forty-five Summer Street for the parking, for the special permits, same conditions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for approval for forty-five Summer Street for parking. Any further discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries. Four point four, city council petition forty dash eighteen. Kristen Kelly, planning director, amend article eighteen, section twenty-two oh five, limits the zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana. We have the plan S, the S submitted to us. And that'll go to the city council unless, unless we want to make any changes.
Specifically about the buffers, I think that was one of the things we left to the point, maybe needing that. And you can see, I tried to color code, there's a large blue note on there.
Yeah.
This is the section about buffers, if we want to leave it that way or want to make changes, that's, that would be, yeah.
I think five hundred...
All the way around, all the way around.
Five hundred radius is good. And I, at this point, I'd like to keep it in industrial and the city council can, I mean, it's their... It's within their jurisdiction if they want to broaden it, but my, my concern then is, I mean, well, first of all, they're going to be restricted by the five hundred foot buffer anyway, but I, I have a concern that someone's going to come in with a request for a expansion of a of a zone, if, you know, because I just think it opens up other issues regardless of the buffer. So if we include, if we start including commercial, then it's not in the right spot in the commercial, then they're looking for a zone change to expand the commercial. Even though we may, we probably wouldn't allow it, it's still going to lock up our agenda.
Yeah, right, and the, uh, well, like I said to the city coun, I mean, they can, they can change it. For the same time, if one of these industries, let, I'm just going to pick on Pioneer Drive, just the heck of it. Uh, let's say they didn't want it in Pioneer Drive, they could change the ordinance to change that to MU one or MU two, and then that wouldn't be industrial anymore. And that, they could take care of it that way too, by changing the zoning where industrial actually is. It really wouldn't affect the land that much.
Well, and I'm, are you saying in order to, for the city council, in order to avoid, you're saying in order to avoid having it there? Well, I'm thinking that's a perfect place, because it's connected by a road that starts off as a mixed use anyway. And I, essentially, commercial and then going into industrial. But I see what you're saying.
I just picked that spot as a, a sample, not as what we would do.
Yeah, I know, exactly, I know, and I guess I'm specifically outlining this as a spot, as an ideal spot, which is more of an argument on, in, yeah, in support of what I'm saying, that we don't really have to include commercial. There's only so many we can have anyway.
I also think that it's probably prudent to start slow. And clearly, it's easier to loosen the reins on something than it is to try to drag something back in once it's been loose.
Let's find out, let's find out what we got, you know? And what kind of problem, because, I mean, all depends the way you read. I mean, you talk about Colorado and it's going, they go crazy.
I think it's important, we have places now in the city, and that will allow this to happen. I think that's where we wanted to get to.
Oh, yeah.
They do. I think they all do.
It's all over.
I've looked at some pictures, like this house is...
Yeah.
But you don't find a lot of areas with the densities of Massachusetts, you know?
So the first part is, we're going to leave it at five hundred feet.
Yeah. So that is a change to the draft, because right now it says a thousand, so that's good.
Just, just to add one change in the block.
So when we take that as a separate vote, then we'll go, okay, then we'll make the changes.
So I move to, I move to amend the proposal from a thousand foot buffer to five hundred feet.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries.
And then I make a, if, if we're going to do it that way, John, it might as well be in keeping. I make a motion to include or to add to the proposed ordinance, section I under one oh five point six point three, a traffic impact report as set forth in section one oh five point six point four point F will be required. Or will be included in the application.
So I have a motion to add traffic rape impact report.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded, do we have any other?
Maybe I make one more comment, because we left this out until the last part, but the table of uses, we'll need to add an item to the table of uses. And you can see, I don't have one in there. It would be pretty simple at this point, though, it would be the, all of the zones, um, where you know for everything except industrial by special permit, city council and site plan approval?
Yes.
Okay, I would add that to my...
And site plan approval.
Okay, so let's, I'm going to, before...
Well, let's take care of the traffic in a way that...
Well, no, no, okay, so do we go on that?
Yeah, all in favor, all in favor say aye, all in traffic, opposed say no.
Then let me do J, then I'll do, so I make a motion to modify the proposed ordinance to include J under one oh five point six point three that will, the application shall also include a water and power consumption plan.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries.
Then, then I think we should, then, this is what...
The separate section.
What's that?
For, uh...
Table of uses.
Table of uses.
Well, should, at this point, should we just vote on the entire ordinance and then do a separate vote on that? Or is that going to be...
No, no, yeah.
You're going to be giving a recommendation, you could recommend these changes plus add a line to table of uses.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we could be done this time, then we'll just make a motion for a all-inclusive.
Okay, because do we usually include where it's going to be, because my point is, those are the proposed amendments to the
To this.
Proposed ordinance, now shouldn't we just vote on this and make separate?
Yeah, why don't we vote on this, it'll be cleaner.
So, yeah, that's what I mean, so then I make a motion to, um, recommend approval as amended, to recommend approval as amended, the, um...
To the city council.
Article eighteen marijuana facilities.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to recommend approval to the city council for article eighteen modification marijuana facilities as amended. Any further discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries.
I make a motion to include in the table of uses, um...
Under industrial.
Under industrial, the, now the, now the article eighteen marijuana facilities allowed only as, by special permit for the city council and site plan approval by the planning board and no in every other...
In all other categories.
In all other zoning districts, yes.
Okay. A motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. For the vote. Uh...
So, uh, city council, these are all holes, right?
John, I'm sorry, um, the one forty-five Central Street.
Oh, new business.
Uh, new business, one forty-five Central Street. Sorry, I wrote it down there and I can't even read my own record.
What is it?
We're just scheduling it, it's a site plan and special permit for parking for one forty-five Summer Street.
And, and Chris, we, we talked about this earlier today, the, uh, so that lot, I mean, that use requires twenty-two based on square footage, right? So he didn't have twenty-two on that lot, he had some on it in the adjacent lot.
The combination of parking on his lot, uh, and then next door, there's easements, there's access easements.
Right.
Um, and they should be covered, because they also have to show the parking for the whole, not just that building, but the surrounding buildings.
But they're still in common ownership, right? I'm just curious.
Some of them are, yes, some of them are. So they will, they will get a special permit to show that they have the required parking spaces and agreements in place to access them, because they will have to go on other people's lots, basically, to get to them, so...
What street is this on?
So it's such a...
One forty-five Central.
Remember the check, uh, what is putting in check process in those lots? Those lots there.
In the back there.
Sportsman's plastic.
Sportsman, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So those are all we ain't had, all those. But now there's a use going into one of the, where that building is.
So they're going to put it together.
July sixteenth.
Yeah. Motion be July sixteenth at, uh...
Six forty.
Six forty.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
July sixteenth at six forty.
Uh, for the special permit?
For the, for the year.
Yeah, it's a special permit, right?
Right.
It's both, special permit and site plan.
Okay.
One forty-five Central Street, special permit. At six forty and then...
Six forty and six forty-five, yeah.
Six forty-two.
Yeah, six forty-two.
Why don't we make it six forty-two?
Yeah.
No, okay, yeah.
How about six forty-one?
You could do that.
How about six thirty, forty and point three?
I'm just saying.
Yeah, look, behave yourself, guys. I have a motion made and seconded.
For what time?
Six forty-one.
Six forty-one.
There you go, nice.
All in favor say aye. Vote say no, motion carries. Now, I have asked at least four different city councils why we cut this. And they all said, they mean, oh, I thought it was a good idea.
Well, it's too many good ideas lately.
Well, I just want to bring up something. This, this thing is...
Take it as a block.
Yeah, and we can...
If they're going to submit something like this to us, that we need a plan, I mean, otherwise, we're the planning board, otherwise, I'm going to say, yeah, all right, I mean, I don't know why.
Well, I'm going to say is, the question I have here is, is, refer to the DPW.
Yeah, it's a...
Yeah, is, is there, there's a cost involved to all of this, okay? So you can't just say, yeah, hey, can you do this, no. I want to, I want to see, in my book, if I'm going to act on something like this, you know, what is the cost involved and what's the impact? What's the size of the light?
Yeah.
Okay, and they're going to be, uh...
That's my point.
And so, and the if...
And where are they in location to the houses, I mean, we're just getting...
Yeah, and so...
I mean, on Bicentennial, they want three, there's three, and a Y two, Y two twelve and five.
Well, let me, I would assume that this must be coming from somebody, either the police department, the DPW...
Oh, no, come from the city council or that.
David Cormier, five.
David Cormier.
I don't, I don't David well, I'm not sure that he drove down Bicentennial and decided which light poles to put on. I don't know if there's a formula that they, you're supposed to...
No, this is the first time I've done this.
No, I'm just saying, yeah, I'm assuming that there's got to be some background information.
Someone must have recommended these locations.
Right, that's all.
We need more information.
I agree, we don't have enough, but I think...
Well, why we give...
It's like John said specifically, you have certain questions.
Yeah, the, the, when we give, when we give them, we need further information, is, okay, you know, what type of lighting? What, okay, uh, and...
Where they're, where they're actually located in connection to where the, how the lots are.
Right.
Kind of plan.
Or just, you know, maybe we should just make the recommendation that they go directly to the DPW and work with them and and the city council.
How is, how have these things been?
I know, that's what I was...
Let me give you some history.
All right, but not, how far are you going to go?
Only, I'm only going to go back to...
When the horses were... When you were walking to school with no shoes?
You can remember, and you can remember, when we were first on the board...
Don't put me in this.
Oh, no, you'll remember, when we were first on the board, the city council was an austerity project. We don't want lights in any of the subdivisions, take them all, put them in, that was back, that's why, that's why on Bridle Cross, you know, Farm Hill Road, all of those, you know, they don't have any lights, because that was the request of the city council at that time, because they cost too much money. And those places are all underground wiring. Today, it would be super expensive to take and put them in, because you'd have to put all the wiring, new poles, in the whole package.
These are existing poles.
These, these have existing poles, so that problem, so it's a reversal of what we had twenty years ago. Now the city council is requesting lights, and I'm sure there are people saying, hey, you know, I'd like to have a light on my street, it's, it's really dark. And, uh, so...
Leave me a front porch light on.
So that's, that's why, you know, so, you know, what's the cost involved, what size light, and, uh...
Cost involved, the type and size of light, yep.
Okay, and, and who's going to maintain them?
And, and why those, why those specific spots? I'm assuming like it's not directly in front of the house or something, but we're doing too much assuming here.
Yeah.
And, and like Sal said, I have, um, where are they, where specifically are they located and provide a plan of, a plan or map of the...
Location.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, development plan.
So can that just be one motion for us?
We'll make that motion for, we'll take these and block, uh, six point one through six point seven.
Motion to make six point one through six point seven to take all of these in block.
Second.
Okay, and...
Motion made.
And motion has been made and seconded we refer it back to the city council with our comments. Okay all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no motion carries.
Still waiting we still need the motion to take them in block. So just say yes we took them in block take the vote we already seconded it and.
Motion made and all in favor say yes.
Yes approved yes yes okay we're good. Six point eight you skipped the whole thing there.
Skip your nose.
Six point eight.
Oh man.
Review or director of planning. Uh everybody got the should have got it in the package.
Yes.
Okay.
Do all this for that limit. That's what I want.
Do my best.
I still have to.
Does this the original one.
Yeah this is in fact you still get chairman's name on it now.
Yeah I know that's okay.
Oh yeah I I provided some comments and suggestions just based on my reality.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Um but you know they're just suggestions you can.
No I would love to see my job this way.
That's good I've got to I've got to sit down with the mayor on this um this week sometime.
That's good can you just can you just. Okay good.
You have. You have comments that you anybody get if they look at it things that you know. You notice the change on here is it was changed the director of community development was taken out so this is planning and CDPG.
I I don't know if I did that or I've always been known as the director of planning and development so I tried to make it more consistent with that and the CDPG coordinator so again I don't know how that.
I can ask her I don't know why that's the first.
That's I I did that I suggested that it's the it's the director of planning and development and CDPG coordinator.
Okay. So my my only well I'll I'll leave this to John when John meets the mayor because the mayor may have added that because my discussions with the mayor back in two thousand fifteen. Was that he was looking for someone who would not only be the and I'm I'm assuming he has the same philosophy today not only the director of planning but someone who was going to be able to. Manage the staff which Kristen has done well but then also be able to go out in the community. And and I think that was the reason that may have been added so you may want to ask ask him.
Right.
So that that was that's my thing.
Okay.
But if if that's just a matter of semantics I mean because it sounds like a lot when it's advertised that way and it might be overwhelming director of planning and development director slash community that it sounds like well I have to do like four jobs and that's my salary range. So maybe that's another reason to.
Yeah.
To um.
And then planning and development and direct community development is like more than the same you know.
It's it varies by by town by city.
Yeah.
Um and even how they organize sometimes planning and development includes the building department so it's just you know you know based on.
Yeah I agree.
Yeah yeah yeah.
How I've done it or sort of acted it's I want to say that this it's CDPG coordinator is what I'm called on the CDPG documents and that sort of thing so that's fine.
Yeah.
But director of planning and development but again that's just I probably know it's written the other way in the city ordinance and it has to stay that way I don't know.
Okay alright.
Do you have a master's degree in urban development.
Yeah she did. She went to every college.
So Kristen what else would be added to your reality.
The reality I what one thing I tried to provide a little more detail on is the CDPG responsibilities and I want to say you know back two years ago. Um some of the stuff that I do now is done by you know Andy Taylor the there was an assistant planning director well there isn't one anymore and so.
Right.
Those responsibilities instead of just overseeing the whole thing you know you have to actively be putting together the action plans and managing schedules so it it is much more hands on than I think um it was even five years ago.
That's what Andy did then when mayor then that's what Kate did before she when she was the assistant.
Yeah.
Or Steve Parker.
Yeah so that's why.
I just wanted to you know make sure that it's.
So I think that's fine I can see why you why you struck out oversee permitting functions to the because that's really our function right. I think that maybe that just needs to be worded differently that you have to review the plans that the applications that come in to make sure that they're.
Oh.
No it's over it's in the back.
Yeah I I just moved it.
Oh you did where is it.
One thing this doesn't I should have printed it color but um I moved it that's kind of strikeout I just literally organizing it a little bit.
Yeah it's in the back.
Oh I see that I understand okay. Alright.
Yep I tr- I just moved it so it's still in there.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah it's at the top of the second page.
Okay alright alright that's fine.
No it's obviously.
I was just thinking.
I can't take that out.
Well I know well I was well my thought was it it I thought maybe it was the way it was worded not not so much.
Okay. Yeah no.
But I guess that's fine.
It's again you know now this thing is two more than two pages I could probably be kind of tied up a little bit but um just for others to decide.
Okay alright.
No that doesn't require anything.
Alright I.
What do you mean the motion.
Uh summer schedule no.
No John can just talk to the mayor then we have to then we're then we'll wait for the applications to come in determine whether he does.
And let me know if you want.
To do what we did the last time or.
Then we'll have to set up a committee and do interviews and all that.
Yeah.
Growth.
Okay.
And I'll set that up and I'll come up with a plan.
Twice.
Okay summer July sixteenth we already know that.
July sixteenth and August twentieth.
Okay.
So not no meeting on the August sixth no meeting on July second and then um.
July fifteenth and August what.
July sixteen.
Sixteen sixteen I guess.
August twenty.
In August twentieth.
And August twenty.
And um.
Let the motion accept that if we got the thing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for July sixteenth and August twentieth summer schedule. All in favor say aye.
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 Post say no motion carries. Okay I asked Kristen to put a. Project review together of things that we've done and she's done on the forefront of the last.
We figured I should probably have a director's report reported.
Director's report.
He was giving you an A plus for that.
So I'll keep it brief but I thought John asked me if I could maybe do a little summary of projects that have happened in the past two and a half years and so. I had a little fun with it and.
Tony what the.
Now what I know now I know the applicants.
Did he get those up high.
That's alright.
You oh I have hand up.
Take that with you. No Tony put it up high so you can roll in the.
On the top flip.
Thank you. The only problem is I got stuff on the back.
Yeah.
That's right.
Here's the other hand up so.
Denied. Second.
Thank you.
When I first started in December of twenty fifteen John took me on a tour around the city to show me a lot of the projects that had happened.
You went along with them in the car I didn't know that.
Oh. Went for a nice little trip I went all over town.
It was a three hour drive.
And you still took the job.
And so I went ahead and I did that myself the other day and took some pictures of projects that had happened since for the most part since I've been here so very quickly I'll just go through some of them. So there's been a lot of housing development now I wasn't here when the outer street was approved but it's um.
She's going to take credit for it anyway.
I'm just going to put it on there well because it's coming up so nice it's almost done they're going to be renting it I think starting in July and it certainly looks a lot better than it did even you know six months ago. So I like to put that on there forty five Summer Street obviously we talked about tonight um that will happen and I'm sure they will start this summer. Uh Ava Way is the subdivision was approved right before it got here they came back for modification and so there's a picture of it sort of mostly built over there um off of Bel Air Heights.
Some looks like that one.
Um and then that seventy five Marion is the one over by um behind the post office so the six units going in over there.
Can I can I yeah can I ask about that did that come before us or is that but as of right and if it came before us why don't I remember it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No it came before.
It did.
Yeah we had several meetings.
I don't know if they had a special.
We even had a sidewalk in the back there because there was a lot of concern about the parking in the back.
Yeah it was parking.
Was I here.
Well physically maybe.
Because I have to say that's a lot of space for a little lot it meets the it meets the density requirements and everything.
You made the motion.
I don't have any. I honestly don't remember when was that approved do you remember.
Remember Salina put the extra two parking spaces along the side because and because so they don't have enough parking.
That's right.
Yep.
Because I was trying to control you.
When was that approved do you remember the timeframe.
Last summer it was last August.
Well actually it looks like.
Yeah.
It's been a while.
It's been a while. No actually I remember because one of your friends was also a woman attorney.
Oh Chaney was she here okay now it's coming back to me.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay here's what.
Food and drink.
Food and drink so approved a lot of restaurants fast food all kinds of stuff.
Roma Joe's.
So we got the one tank grill over here down at Mill Street which replaced a nasty old um industrial kind of building really cleaning up the area.
Good job.
Um we've got this McDonald's on Mill Street was torn down and rebuilt. Got a couple of small businesses BJ's Grill is on the corner of Day Street and Main Street and there was that old purpose free meal thing.
Oh yeah yeah.
Hey actually that very good I was in there they were very good.
They are open yes. Yes they are open.
Yeah it was very good.
Oh I just noticed this it's so orange and green in the back.
Yeah.
In the condition of his approval that he made the whole building.
Alright okay we'll take care of that.
Alright.
Maybe you just had.
This is Roma Joe's is down by um in front of Lowe's and I don't know I don't remember the name of this Takeria El Migo so he's on North Main Street and even though.
Oh yeah I remember that.
He's been approved for a while he hasn't opened yet which is we're kind of waiting but I think he's planning on a grand opening.
Then it's.
And yeah.
After we've eaten all that fast food we have to go to hospital.
We've got plenty of new med facilities Carol.
What's that.
We're going to be all set we got three.
Very options.
A lot of medical facilities to choose from. So it doesn't look like much now but this is the borderline medical building it's really nice.
Actually.
It really is and you can tell from just the way the siding in the.
Is that one of the hospitals.
It's.
It's an emergency room.
No doctors I go.
It's a medical.
They were on.
Day surgeries.
They're so difficult.
Day surgeries and an emergency room.
Yeah they're just moving over there and they got.
They'll have doctors' offices in the area.
It's got a big Greg Oss.
Yeah.
It's like a little hospital.
Um this is the emergency room expansion at the hospital they're working on that now and then the Med Express right across the street where the uh one of the bank was I forget which one.
I support you.
I support you yeah. There you go.
I get it now.
Alright and the other businesses of note Enterprise Bank which of course I think opened a couple of weeks ago. Um it looks very nice the New England Farms gas stations.
Yeah.
That looks really nice actually.
Gives you it's really nice.
And it fits there very nicely.
Yeah yeah it's landscaped well and everything.
Yeah.
D C U Center I also had a picture of they remember when that McCarty came in to widen that from one lane to two they have done that so I'm sure it's out there now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah okay.
Well so we can make the corner now on the drive through.
Yeah yeah you can go you can you can pass the guy or maybe make a win.
Because I would think of my truck.
Yes.
If we're not happy about that um Cumberland Farms of course which is first project I work on.
Yeah.
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 And Registry um down Research Drive oh and I.
Yeah.
Will they do something looks good.
Yep and I don't have pictures of everything but also on Research Drive we have continental stone process cooling so that was empty and now there's you know tenants and 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 counting.
Yeah.
Nice.
Good job.
So obviously there's a lot more projects than that but those were some interesting ones that I could get a nice visual you know and so it goes from the plan to the finished product and it's and it's nice so.
Very nice.
So again that's one I want to thank you everybody and for all of your support and um it's been fun.
Well we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
We are.
We are going to miss you.
I'm going to miss you too.
You did a great job.
So you can still come back and visit that's why I'm like.